Let's go ahead and call together the concurrent City Council and Council as successor agency meeting. It's seven o'clock, and we'll go ahead and do the call to order. And pledge of allegiance, and I would like Kathy King, and please, she'll stand from her seat, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
With that, we'll do roll call.
Councilmember Hundley?
Here.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Councilmember Agravanti?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Gallion?
Present. So, it's at this point that we would go ahead and we would entertain comments from the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing in the agenda. It is recommended that you keep comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by City Council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for council consideration. And upon being acknowledged by the mayor, please step up to the podium and speak into the microphone. Begin by stating and spelling your name and address.
Dave Ransom. I live in Santa Rosa. I go to church in Sonoma. This is a carryover from the preceding two-hour meeting. Thank you very much for that meeting. It struck me that you're in a difficult, very difficult position because you're operating within a box that was constructed for a different time. And that's true of the planning commission, too. The process that's underway has pushed us outside of that box. The, for instance, the return that investors want from their developers at this point, as advertised by some of the ones that are operating in this area, is 15% per year. So, that really drives up the cost of things. We need more rental units. In the past, we were concerned with building affordable, buyable housing units. Now, we're in the need for rental units. We need that state redevelopment money back. That was a bigger part of the solutions of the past. It's important for us, then, to get out ahead of this process. The Board of Supervisors is approving in the next week, I believe, the overlay, the banning expansion of rental, of vacation rentals in the Springs. That's something you can look at for, as an example. Santa Rosa has just adopted rent control and just cause eviction. Of course, that's going to have all sorts of legal problems, but nonetheless, it's a real gutsy step ahead. It's clear, you know, earlier, a fellow said that this is a regional problem. It's not just that, it's an international problem. But in this region, solving it for the city without solving it for the Springs doesn't make any sense. So, there's this historical box that we're in, where we have a city government and a county government. Somehow, we have to get over that and work together. If not, we're going to end up like Calistoga. Calistoga, as you may have seen in the paper, has set up a busing situation to get its workers into town. It's bringing them from Santa Rosa, it's going to bring them from Leo. For us, it would be Tracy. We already have workers coming from Tracy. And I think maybe one of the things that get us, get us all out of the box is to give us an opportunity, and maybe it's something that we have to do for ourselves, to have a real open city hearing where people come forward. Everybody's got a good idea and a good concern, and it's a real opportunity for us all to be working together. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for that two-hour meeting today.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy King. I'm the Executive Director of Sonoma Overnight Support. I live in Sonoma in the Moon Valley Mobile Home. What I'd like to present to the council this evening is just a little update on the usage of your shelter, which is right across the street, and to tell you how many people we've served with compassion and dignity and the need for some expansion of some type. Last year, 57 residents came through the haven. Forty-five were from Sonoma. Twelve were from the county. We serve 329 unique individuals with our drop-in services. And also, during the winter, thanks to the county, we served 39 individuals with 213 bed nights. Currently, we have about, we have seven residents in the shelter. Half of them are working, and we're going to add to that to our 10-bed. The other thing we know for sure, and we know the names of these people, is that we have 10 people that we can name who are living in their cars. They come to our day's service. And what we'd like to propose, and we know this isn't the appropriate time to deal with it, but just to duplicate the model that they're using in Santa Rosa of having safe parking, either at an undisclosed church, of which we have a church that has agreed to do it, or in front of our haven, or multiple use. Just have a test run, a pilot run. These are the newly people that have either been evicted. They usually have jobs. They want to live in their cars because they can't come into the haven because of medical challenges, because they have pets, or because they have a partner, and they don't want to be separated from them. We also have a waiting list of 28 people, which is just enormous. Every day, we turn people away, not even to get on the waiting list, because they may have young children. This is very difficult for us. We want to serve, first, the citizens of Sonoma and the valley, and we also want to serve our homeless clients with, to the best of our ability. So, we ask you, in the future, if you could help us serve them better with compassion and dignity. Thank you very much. I have handouts if you'd like documentation of that.
If you'd like to give those to the city clerk?
Okay.
We'll get them.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Kathy.
Linda Carrato, First Street East. Hi, everybody. I just want to strongly encourage you to create an ad hoc committee on affordable housing, homelessness, workforce housing. I would like it to be done right away so that we can have a diverse committee that is solution-driven and that can work together on an ongoing basis, and then present to you solutions that you can contemplate in helping to solve this problem.
Thank you very much, Linda. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on public comment? With that, I'll go ahead and close the public comment area and open it up for meeting dedications. Do we have any meeting dedications? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. And this will be recognition of Brandon Ruiz for his senior project, purchase of a canine bite suit. And if you would please approach the podium.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for giving us a little bit of time. For those that don't know me, my name is Jeff Sherman. I'm the canine handler here for Sonoma PD. This is our canine, Dicky. I had to take him out, he's getting a little too excited for you guys. But we just wanted to publicly acknowledge, this is Brandon Ruiz. He's a high school senior, and in about, I'd say, October, maybe the end of September, he came over to the PD and got ahold of me, and what he wanted to do for his senior project was something on the canine. So, he's got a passion of law enforcement, specifically with canines. So, he wanted to take me and shadow me and learn about the dog and do a paper on the dog to show kind of what the canines mean to law enforcement and what kind of an asset he is to us. So, part of his senior project was raising money for us, and he actually raised just under $3,000. So, one of the pieces of equipment that I wanted when we first got the dog was a bite suit, kind of one of those big puppy suits that the dogs, we used during training. But unfortunately, due to the high cost of the dog and the whole program itself, Chief Sackin decided to postpone that to a later date. So, Brandon here actually raised the money, about $1,800 worth for the suit. So, we are now proud owners of a new bite suit, and we just wanted to come and show our appreciation to him. So, without further ado, this is Brandon.
Well, Brandon, congratulations. This is a wonderful project. I know how hard you have to work on a senior project. I've had a son that's gone through high school and know that this is a year-long effort for you.
Yes, ma'am.
And just the fact that you have gone ahead and put so much effort into something that is so worthwhile, and to do it for your local government, the city here of Sonoma, we are most appreciative.
Thank you very much.
So, with that, I'd like to give you this certificate of appreciation, presented to you in recognition of your contribution of a canine unit bite suit. Thank you very much. Let's have a picture. Do you want to do it up in the air?
You're welcome to make a few comments. Put your hand on this, this is yours. And go ahead, and if you wish to make a few comments.
Floor's yours.
Oh, lovely. Okay. Hi, everyone, I'm very nervous. I just want to thank the council and the mayor for doing this for me. I really appreciate it. I didn't go into this project expecting to have any sort of payment or any sort of recognition for it. I did it because I feel the senior project should benefit your community in some way because it's your responsibility as an outgoing senior, and a lot of them might not return to the city of Sonoma. So, it's your responsibility to leave the city of Sonoma better than the way you came into it. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure Dicky thanks us, too. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to our consent calendar and agenda order for City Council. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Council members? Any removals? Any changes? All right. I'll go ahead and open this up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on the consent calendar or agenda order, please step forward. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. I'm looking for a motion or discussion.
Unless there are any questions or comments, I'd like to make a motion on item 4A, 4B, 4C, and 4D.
And I believe, Rachel, you have the second?
I will second it.
All right. So, we have, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for the roll call.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Agravanti?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye. So, that is the passing of the consent calendar, 5-0. We'll move on to consent calendar, agenda order for City Council as successor agency. Is there anyone who wishes to remove any items at this point from that item? All right. Seeing none, I'll move it out to the public. Public, do you have any comments on this? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to council, looking for a motion or discussion. Councilmember Cook?
I'd like to make a motion on the consent counter, item 5A.
Second.
So, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Then, we should go for roll call.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Agravanti?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye. So, that passes also with the 5-0, and we will move on to public hearing. There is none scheduled for this evening. That brings us to our regular calendar for City Council. And this is item 7A, City Clerk Certification of Referendum Petition to Repeal Ordinance 01-2016, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sonoma, adding Chapter 9.60 to the Sonoma Municipal Code to regulate and prohibit the use of leaf blowers within city limits. We're going to turn this item over to City Attorney Jeff Walters at this time.
Thank you. The first item of business is that the clerk has submitted to you a certification from the registrar's office indicating that sufficient valid signatures were affixed to the petition to referenda the council's leaf blower ordinance, such that the council is required by law to reconsider that ordinance. That's the language used in the code. I've actually handed out a outline of options. This outline, I've copied it, and there are copies in the rack to the left of the door entering, leading into the entrance to the council's chambers. So, if the public wishes to follow along, they can obtain copies at that location. The fact that the petition has been certified indicates that the ordinance now is suspended. It's no longer in effect. It has no effect whatsoever and stays in a state of suspension until the council does one of three things. First, it has the option of repealing the ordinance on its own. Second, it has the option of setting the matter for a, an election at a regular municipal election, at the next regular municipal election, which occurs in November this year. Or, it can call a special election that must occur at some point in the future, but no less than 88 days from the date that the council orders that election. Interestingly enough, the Elections Code does not put a ceiling or a deadline by when that special election can take place, nor does it require the council to set or call that special election within a particular period of time. I've represented councils that have deferred exercising one of these options for many months, eventually deciding to repeal the ordinance, I forget how many years after the referendum petition was certified. I'm not suggesting that that is what this council should do, or that's the wise course to take. I'm just suggesting that the law is sort of vague and unspecific when it comes to the council having to take certain actions. Please also note that, at some point, this measure needs to be addressed by either the council or the electorate, and if it is repealed by either the council or the electorate, then for a 12-month period after the repeal, the same ordinance or a substantially similar ordinance cannot be reenacted. After that 12-month period is over, however, all bets are off, and the council is free to do what it wishes. So, the fact that the, a referendum is ultimately successful does not prohibit the council from taking the same action. I'm not, again, suggesting that that's the wise thing to do or the political thing to do, it's just legally, the council has that power. In my handout, the last bullet point, because we have received questions concerning this matter, I've laid out the language that actually would appear on an election or a ballot if the council were to call an election. And the question that's posed to the electorate on the ballot is, shall the ordinance, and then you describe the ordinance, be adopted? Some people feel that referendums create a sort of a double negative issue. Are we repealing or repeal, are we supporting the ordinance, are we supporting the referendum? So, the Elections Code takes care of that by simply stating the question, shall this ordinance be adopted? And so, the electorate understands, when they vote yes, it means they're in favor of the ordinance, and when they vote no, they are against it. If there are any questions, I'm here to assist in answering them.
Mayor Protem Agravanti?
I hope I'm not stepping out of the realm of this, but with respect to this, what happens to the guidelines? The guidelines have nothing to do with this, is that right? That have already been, I think they were passed in 2011 or 2013?
Were there, everything guidelines actually adopted? Were the guidelines adopted?
Yes. What was, in other words, what existed on the books before the ordinance? So, what's in there?
Whatever was in place prior to the council's adoption of this ordinance remains in place.
All right. Thank you. That's, thank you so much.
Okay. Anyone else with questions? All right. Let's go ahead and bring it out to public. Anyone wishing to make public comment on this item?
Someone should talk about this. God, it's been going on so long. Jack Wagner, Fana Lane. I supported the City Council's decision to move forward on this ordinance, and I totally respect any citizens that put together that amount of signatures for a referendum. I doubt any of you guys are going to change your votes tonight, so I think probably the best bet is to put it on the general ballot. Definitely don't need a special election for it. I don't think we need to postpone making a decision for months. I don't think that's going to make any side happy. I would look very forward to having the people vote on this. I think this is taking a long time to get here, and I think this would be a nice way of resolving it, maybe, for a year. At least a year, I guess. So, yeah, no, I definitely support putting this on the ballot in November, and then I can spend this election talking about housing and the budget and homeless people, and we can let the people decide. Cool. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Well, the question you guys are all dying to know.
First of all, your name and your address.
Mary Ebert, Sonoma, in town. The Warriors are ahead 60 to 47 at halftime. I'm just curious, well, number one, I suggest that you put it towards the ballot. I mean, people have been wanting this forever. My question, though, is because of the wording, it's a little bit confusing, where it says ban leaf blowers, it's not just gas. So, is that going to be the wording on the ballot? Or how, how does this go about? There's also the prohibit. So, it looks like ban and prohibit, which sounds very negative, and a lot of people are against anything negative. So, how will the wording be on the ballot? Can you tell us that? Do we know? Is it going to be exactly how it was worded because it was just conveniently left off when it went through this last time? Is it going to be corrected before it goes on the ballot?
Thank you very much. I will have your answer through staff.
Okay.
Chris Petlock, 426 Napa Road, Sonoma. This is like Groundhog's Day. I remember when this first came before the CSCC and we put together the noise ordinance that this is being pushed back to. And I remember when Lisa Summers and her crew came in and asked us to ban it again, and I told them, at that point, be careful what you ask for because it could be that this is rolled all the way back to no ban. You can end up with this on the ballot. My fuzzy math says that a good portion of the electorate actually turned in signatures for this, certainly a better part of who voted in the last election. It's been a lot of fun, but I'm really glad to see this going on the ballot, and maybe we can put this to bed for good, and we can get on to more important issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
David Iker, 1110 Loma Court. And, you know, I believe a lot of the people that, because I actually spoke to a couple of them, who signed the petition actually want, do want to see gas-powered leaf blowers banned. And so, this is, you know, by signing, you know, the referendum, then people are not necessarily asking to overturn it, they're asking to put it on the ballot. So, that's what I want to encourage you to do when it is your time to do that, put it on the November ballot. I don't think we need to put a special election or delay it. And my understanding is that the title and the ordinance as is has to be on there. However, the City Council and the staff and the attorney will still have to come up with a summary, and also, you can decide if you want to put arguments on the ballot, either for or against the ordinance, hopefully for, since we wrote it for the ordinance. And if you decide not to put in an argument, then there's some, you know, there's a question of who else would be able to put in an argument for the ballot measure. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comments section, and I have a question for the attorney. All right. Given that tonight, we're making this decision, does this mean that we would be coming back with a future agenda item that would have what we're directing staff to do tonight?
Yes, it would. You're not making a decision tonight, you're giving us direction. And the direction may be, we don't yet know, Mr. Walter, what we want to do. So, we want you at least to come back with a repealer ordinance and a resolution calling for an election at the November 8 election date. Bring those both back to us, and at that time, when they're brought back, we will there, at that time, decide what we want to do. That's a, for example.
Right. As to the title of what we would be calling the ordinance, is this something that you need to have time to study, or is this something that?
I think I do. I'm taking a look at the language I've quoted from the state statute. In my bullet point, number six, quote, "Shall the statute or ordinance," and then we're supposed to state the nature thereof, including any identifying number or title, be adopted. Just from a, you know, superficial reading of that, doesn't seem to me to indicate you must include the title. You can include the number of the ordinance and a description of the nature of the ordinance. I'll look into that. I know it's typical, and I don't know if I've ever deviated from that practice, to simply replicate the title of the ordinance as it was adopted by the council.
So, in other words, as we're discussing this item and what, what was, you know, put on our agenda tonight, it says here that prohibit the use of leaf blowers within the city limits. Something like that might appear, or is it a little bit more ordinance-inclusive?
Well, as I recall, the ordinance read something like, "Shall an ordinance prohibiting and regulating leaf blowers in the city of Sonoma." So, it said both because the ordinance actually did that.
Right. So, this would be something that you would bring back for us to review?
Oh, you're looking at the certificate?
This is what the actual title is.
Oh, okay. The actual title of the ordinance is on the agenda.
But it did not say gas.
Right. It did not call out which, which type of leaf blower is being prohibited. It did not call out which type of leaf blower was being regulated. The title did not. So, whether or not you must replicate that title in the ballot measure, I do not know. That's common, but I do not know if that's legally required. I could look into that if the council wishes me to do that.
Yes. Councilmember Cook?
Yes. Since I just got this 10 minutes ago, I'm not prepared to do anything tonight except for give direction back to staff as far as my two cents. I do believe that when I read the ordinance, it's confusing. It's going to be confusing to the voter. I'd like city staff to come back and look to see exactly how it's going to look on the ballot before we, we vote to have a go on the ballot. And the other question that I'd like city staff to answer is, there's going to be the pros and cons as there is in every election, and who is going to be deemed to be on, on the pros and con signatures? And does the city have the right to dictate that? Or if not, who does?
I can provide some answers on the comments that were made by the public on the issue, as well as Councilmember Cook. There typically is not a summary of the ordinance, including the ballot measure. There's typically not an impartial analysis submitted by the city attorney. Those occur with respect to initiatives, but not with referenda. In terms of argument, the council has the first opportunity and first privilege to craft an argument, either pro or con. And then, the Elections Code lays out in a priority ranking the other types of individuals or groups that have the right to submit arguments. And that information will come back to you when this returns to you. But the council has the first crack at it, if you want to. You don't have to.
And also, I have one question. When we, when this comes back, could we see what the cost of a special election would be? Just curious.
We would, it would be very helpful for the council to give us general direction. You may not be in a place to want to do that tonight, or it may be bring back staff the option, all three options. Option one is to repeal, so we'd have an ordinance for you to adopt that would repeal it on its, on its own. Two, an order calling for the election on November 8. Or three, calling for a special election whenever. That's up to you. At least, it needs to be 88 days. So, we could bring all three of those. So we could bring all three of those options back to you, and you make that decision at that time.
Okay. So, Councilmember Hundley?
I would like to submit the ordinance to the voters at the November election. Well, I guess, are we considering between July or November? No, because it's not less than 88. So it'd be the November election, and? Because it's not 88 days.
Has to be 88 days.
Right, so November's our choice. I don't really want to spend the money on a special election. And as far as what, how the ordinance is described in there, I defer to you guys for that one.
Okay. Councilmember Edwards?
So I'd like to move it along and be done with this. And as far as the language goes, I mean, back when we had Measure A, it was, we had to get people to say yes for something that meant no. So it's just, it's politics. It's the way that it is. So I don't have a big issue with that. So I'd like to just move along as soon as possible, be willing to make a motion to that effect.
So are you, if you're going to make a motion, I think it would be clarifying if you told us what options you were choosing for this motion? Option or options, okay, that you're choosing for this item? So anyone wishing to make a motion? Yes? Further discussion? Councilmember Hundley?
I would like to make a motion to give staff direction to prepare a submission of this ordinance to the voters at the November election.
Okay, that would be option number two?
Well, it's the third bullet point on the list, but I guess the second option, so.
Yes, that's option two. Is that correct, city attorney?
That's correct.
Okay. And is that concise enough for you as a motion? All right, do I have a second for that motion? Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second for option two. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, then I will?
I'm so sorry. I apologize. Yes, I do have a question.
Sure.
So the person that makes the motion, then the second, is very satisfied with the nebulous language? Just blowers?
No, I said earlier that I assume that the city staff could come back with options about what that is. As far as what it's called, I don't have strong opinions about that. So I feel that perhaps people that were proponents of the ordinance, you guys would have ideas about that. So I just wanted to go to the, get it ready to go to the ballot, and I assume at the next step, we could narrow down the details about who's drafting the pro thing and what's going to be called.
Is this an opportunity for a friendly amendment to talk about language on the ballot?
I think I've got enough sense that we would bring back to the council not only the order calling for the election to occur in November, but also some optional language to insert into the ballot, as well as a discussion of argument. Who is entitled to submit argument, and the prioritization I earlier alluded to. So those would be brought back to you at that time for you to select.
Okay, so, all right, I've got that. Does everyone else understand that? Okay, all right. So now, do we need any further discussion? Because seeing none, then I would go ahead and vote for a roll call on this?
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
No.
Councilmember Agamati?
No.
Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Mayor Gallion?
I will be no. So then we go ahead, and there's another option for us, which would be, we need another motion and something else to come forward at this time. So, do I have any recommendations? Councilmember Cook?
I would like to make a motion for city staff to bring back to the council the three options that the city attorney has stated earlier.
With language, with language and discussion?
Yes.
The argument?
Yes, on all, on all three options.
Do we have a second on that?
Second?
All right, we have a first, we have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion?
I have a couple of questions. Number one, I don't know if there's something on, that's aside from this, but we also mentioned the cost and the lang, well, we've discussed the language, but who, you know, if council members or who signs that? So I would like some information. It has nothing to do with, I guess, the body of this. I hope I've explained myself.
You want discussion of the argument to also be presented?
Yes, I'd like to know if?
Right, that's inclusive? That's inclusive?
Yeah, okay.
The language for the ordinance, and to Councilmember Cook's comment about the cost, that is new.
Yeah, the cost of a special election. I just wanted to throw that in there.
All right. Is that clear for staff?
I think so. I think we can obtain that information and bring it back to you at the same time.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. We've had clarification. Further discussion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hundley?
No.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Agamati?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
No.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye. And with that, we have a majority for option, all three options to come forward. Cost for a special election, language on the ballot, and discussion of argument. Three to two. All right, let's move on to item 7B. All right, 7B is discussion, consideration, and possible action on a first reading of an ordinance regulating secondhand smoke by prohibiting smoking in and around workplaces, public places, and multi-unit housing. I believe this is our city manager and also our assistant city attorney. So we'll give them a second to line up here.
Okay, good evening. As part of the packet, you'll have the ordinance that was prepared with two sources in mind. One was the straw vote that we worked with at the last time we visited this issue, that the council gave guidance. And the other was the comprehensive smoking regulations that is prepared by the Department of Health and a Change Lab Solutions, a legal source that's often used. The ordinance before you does what the council said, but there were also two additional areas that I'd like to bring to the council's attention and guidance. One is that this ordinance mirrors the comprehensive in two areas. And that is, number one, it regulates not only smoking tobacco, but also tobacco use by snuff, when you chew it, you chew the tobacco. And there are findings that this is a public health hazard. So that was added, of course, again, we did not discuss this at the last meeting. The second additional area that we did not discuss was smoking on streets and sidewalks. In this particular ordinance, it's an option, according to the comprehensive law. So I have made that an exception. That is, smoking is permitted on streets and sidewalks under this ordinance. So those are the two changes, well, additions, that were not considered previously. The only other change is the effective date. And I'd like to bring to the council's attention some language that I think would be, more appropriately reflect the wishes of the council. This additional language is from Section 5 of the ordinance. And in your packet, that is found on page 82. And the language before you would substitute for the first sentence of Section 5 as in the packet. The reason for this is if the ordinance is not effective for 30 days after the voters, if they repeal the existing smoking regulations in Sonoma, there would be a 30-day period where everybody could smoke everywhere in Sonoma. There would be no regulations at all. So, again, we took our lead from other ordinances that the council has considered, and we will make this effective upon 30 days after passage, but it won't be, the language says that it will not be, it will be enforced the day that the voters of the city of Sonoma repeal the existing Section 724. The only other thing that's of interest, actually, to our office was the fact that after I made this very comprehensive smoking ordinance covering workplaces and everything imaginable, the legislature in Sacramento got busy and, of course, passed three very significant laws. They covered electronic cigarettes, which this council was interested in doing before the state acted. It also raised the smoking age to 21, which, again, this council had discussed, but I discouraged you because I felt this was coming down the pike on the state level. And the third, and probably the most comprehensive, is the workplace. It's our office's opinion that the comprehensive approach that the state is taking, which is with the intent to create a uniform state standard for workplaces, preempts the city of Sonoma, any city, any other government from making it a new law covering that area. So that would, that's the reason it is not included in the ordinance that you're considering tonight.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions for staff? Yes, Councilmember Cook?
Yeah, could you repeat the sidewalks?
Yes. The exact provision is on page 76. Let me see if I, no, I lied about that. It's on 78. And it is in paragraph, sub-paragraph 5, where it says, "Other public places." It says that, "Provided that smoking is permitted on streets and sidewalks, used only as pedestrian or vehicular thoroughfares, unless otherwise prohibited by this chapter or other law." That's on page 78, chapter, paragraph 5, "Other public places." The thinking there is that there are some dining areas that would be covered by the state law of employment, and if that dining area was on a sidewalk, smoking might be prohibited in that portion of the sidewalk where they're dining. So that would be the exception. But otherwise, if you're walking down the street, unless you're within 20 feet, which is our reasonable distance from an opening into an area, an enclosed area, where smoking is not prohibited. So that would be the 20-foot buffer zone, if you will, from all windows that would be open, or doorways that would be open into places of employment, schools, public places that are enclosed. You'd have to find a sidewalk that wasn't really near a building or a service area.
What about a parking lot?
A parking lot, probably, it depends on where you are in the parking lot, but probably you would be able to smoke unless it was a public parking lot, because that's a public place. But a private parking area, which didn't have an employer or an employee in the parking lot collecting money, would probably be allowed. That's not really a street or a sidewalk, however, so. But it is an unenclosed place. It's not a recreation area. It's really not a service area. It's usually not an employment area.
Then I have another question. Regarding signage, I see that the ordinance would say that there has to be a no-smoking sign, where there's no smoking. How many signs are there going to be in the city of Sonoma?
Well, you'll see that I punted that issue and thought that perhaps Public Works would be in a better position than our office to count the number of signs that you'd need.
Yeah, so, but as far as businesses, so every business would have to have a no-smoking sign by their doorway?
This ordinance does not cover any places of employment, which would be businesses.
So it'd just be public?
It would be public. It would be public recreation areas. It would, it would cover landlords, however, in multi-unit housing, except mobile homes, which we've excluded from multi-unit housing.
Okay. And then I guess the last question is, as far as, if you can't smoke in multifamily units, and you can have a designated spot to smoke, who makes that decision?
The landlord.
If there's an HOA, would HOA supersede the landlord on that?
Well, homeowners association condominiums, the homeowners would be making the decision. Their board of directors.
Yeah, okay.
Any further questions for staff?
I just, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Go right ahead. Mayor Broten?
Same page below, number A.
Which page is that?
Same page, which is, you said 7.
78?
Seven, I have seven.
Okay, I'm counting the packet number.
Oh, got it. I had my finger over 78. So the next section down, A, B, let me see. Oh, I can't believe this is worded like this. Smoking in all unenclosed areas shall be prohibited, blah, 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 going on, going on. Then into an enclosed area in which smoking is prohibited, except while the person smoking is actively passing on the way to another destination.
Okay. In other words, there is an exception for people who are just walking through. They don't have to put out their cigarette and then walk through, and then light up on the other side.
Okay, thank you.
But again, the intent is that they not hang out there. It's just passing through.
All right, Councilmember Cook?
I guess I'm still going back to that HOA. So can you talk, can we talk about mobile homes? Because there was something in here about mobile homes. Can you explain what we're doing with mobile homes?
We are treating mobile homes, even though they're grouped together and very closely, as single-family homes. And we are accepting from the regulation, single-family homes, which include mobile homes.
So under this ordinance, you'd be able to smoke in the mobile homes?
That's correct.
I mean, outside of the mobile homes?
You would be able to smoke outside, however, in the common areas of the mobile home. For example, around the swimming pool, in the laundry facilities. If they have a little rec center that's enclosed, you would not be able to smoke in the common areas of a mobile home park.
And if they decided to put in a smoking area, would that be the people that live in the mobile home or the landlord?
In a mobile home park, it would be the park owner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if I could just have clarification again, because we've talked a lot about sidewalks, all right. Do I understand, because the sidewalks are public, that's why we are not allowing smoking on the sidewalks?
No. A sidewalk is a public place, and you could include sidewalks and streets as well. We didn't talk about that either way, actually, in our discussion grid.
Because I know that there are some cities in California that specifically state that as, because the sidewalk, the sidewalks are public and the streets are public, that there is no smoking in the streets or on the sidewalks, except if you are motoring along. In other words, if you're walking along, you can smoke.
You could, you could make a provision along those lines. You can, because the cities can regulate smoking, and say, in the Plaza, in the Depot Park, whether you're sitting or walking through, those areas, recreation areas, public or private, we are regulating smoking in those areas. However, and you can include no smoking on streets and on sidewalks. There would have to be signage to that effect.
Thank you very much. I just, those are things that I'm trying to clarify. All right, well, with that, if there's no further discussion from council, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment.
Good evening, Mayor Gallion and city council members. Robert Demmler, 649 First Street West, number 8. And it is in the city limits of Sonoma, and I vote in Sonoma, unlike other speakers tonight. I couldn't resist that. This is a big issue for me and for my wife, who is an asthmatic. This is a big issue for me and for my wife, who is an asthmatic, and she had an asthmatic reaction triggered last year, early in the year, by a smoker next door. Some time ago, when this was first discussed, I sent all of you a packet, as well as city staff, with as much as I could find on the Internet about what other cities had done and medical opinions, and, in fact, we got medical opinions from our own physicians about this. We live in a condo development of townhouses. There are common walls, so I'm very interested in that. Also, I really would like some clarification, because I'm very confused. I never thought about this issue of streets and sidewalks. My, part of my structure abuts directly onto what is, unfortunately, a public right-of-way. And we have people go through all the time, and they smoke, and sometimes they sit down on the benches, because it's a very nice courtyard, and very peaceful and quiet. It's Corners Village Lofts. And they smoke. I don't like that. I'd like something done about that. And our garage, I don't know if you would define it as a public or a private garage. The public has excess, because there are clients for mostly medical, or a title company and so forth, in the front building, that come in. People smoke in the garage, even though it's posted "no smoking." So, how would that be defined? I would like the garage covered for no smoking, and I would like this public thoroughfare, sorry, public right-of-way through our development covered as well. I don't know how you do it, but thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much. Mr. Demmler, anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Chris Petlock, 426 Napa Road. I'm all for the smoking ban, but I don't think it does any good unless we're willing to enforce these things. Again, back to the leaf blowers. We wouldn't be having this issue if we would have enforced it, the noise ordinances, in the first place. If the city isn't willing to, if we aren't willing, as a community, to put resources to enforce these rules, we can write them till the cows come home. It won't matter. People will walk by his room smoking. You know, my kids will be able to buy cigarettes in stores unless somebody is willing to put their money where their mouth is and enforce these rules. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Gallion and the City Council. My name is Elizabeth Emerson, and I just want to thank you for all the hard work that you all and the staff put into getting this, to this point. I, as a local resident, am enormously grateful. For the past four years, I've had to really increase my asthma medication, since I share a wall with people who smoke, vape, and use marijuana, the flammable type with fumes. And so, it's been really always a choice between fresh air, you know, when they're not home, or, you know, keeping the windows closed. So, thank you so much. With regard to the enforcement, I'm really familiar with how these ordinances work, and by the way, I recently helped the city of San Rafael City Council with their smoke-free sidewalk ordinances. So, if anybody has questions about how that's going, I can speak to that. These ordinances tend to be self-enforcing, as long as there's signage, and there's a good public education campaign. And I checked in with the Sonoma County Health Department to see if they had a similar program as we offer in other counties where I do consulting, and they did confirm that they would be the first responders. They would launch a public education campaign. They fund Northern California Wellness Center to work with the apartment managers and owners. They would come down here to Sonoma and do a workshop for the public, for managers and owners. We found that to be enormously helpful in other communities and counties, because it gets rid of so many misconceptions, and we help people with their lease amendments, the condo associations, we can help them explain how they can change their CCNRs and notify their tenants. And these are really enforced on-site, just like loud music, you know, if your neighbor in the condo complex is, you know, partying late at night, or somehow violating their leases, or the CCNRs, in the case of condos. So, it's the same thing, but then the county health department would step in as backup. They would help document complaints, and only in rare cases would code enforcement have to get involved. They have a Breathe Easy website. They're willing to post it on there. They also have decals. They want you to know, bumper stickers, signage, because signage is key. And we always make a joke that it's really the soccer moms who enforce these things, you know, in parks and so forth, because, so, I'm here to be of assistance in any way possible. Thank you so much for all of this work.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please step forward.
City Council, my name is Lori Bremner. I live in the Valley, and I've been a Really for Life volunteer for 18 years. I represent the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, and I've had a business on the Plaza for 19 years. So, the state has finally made some progress on smoke-free laws, but the five bills signed by the governor, I just want you to know that none of them eliminate the need for the draft ordinance that you're considering tonight. Also, neither, none of those five bills actually do preempt any cities or counties from passing stricter regulations. The ACS CAN was a sponsor of these five bills, and we don't even support any public health policy at the state level that preempts local cities and counties from passing stricter public health protections. For example, the state bill does not stop smoking at outdoor dining. I hope that you will. That would be a stricter part of the workplace law that you can enact. At the March meeting of this council, one of the council members said that they did not believe that there was a smoking problem on the Plaza, and I respectfully request that that council member do be the 6:00 AM volunteer shift the day after city party, which I've done several years, and you pick up thousands of cigarette butts. I also respectfully remind that council member of the passionate testimony given by Popo the Clown here in October, talking about how she has to put signs around her face painting booth at Tuesday Night Market and Fourth of July, and Bear Flag Celebration, to ask people not to smoke right by the line where her kids are waiting. And even so, she has to leave her tent to ask them to move away with their cigars and cigarettes, and electronic cigarettes, and they say, "I don't see a sign saying I can't smoke here." I also respectfully request that council member does not sit at the basketball lingerie and sip coffee, where people walk by with cigarettes all the time. And then they stop at the real estate office and tap on the window and look at the flyers there while they're smoking, so that when you walk out of those real estate offices, you hit a wall of smoke. That council member also doesn't spend evenings outside Steiners or Town Square, probably is a good thing, where kids gather and smoke on the sidewalks in large numbers. So, I respectfully suggest that there very much is a smoking problem on the Plaza. So, I'm really excited that Sonoma might soon and finally have smoke-free public places and smoke-free multi-unit housing. I ask for a couple clarifications. One, we talk about 20 feet from windows and doorways. The county specifies 25 feet. Science actually says that secondhand smoke drifts 30 feet, so 25 feet at least would be consistent with the county. I really hope that public places includes, and specifically includes, all outdoor dining. I hope that public places includes all the downtown sidewalks, even if people are moving, as I say, they stop and look in the windows, they stop and look at the flyers, the smoke doesn't keep dissipating. And when you're walking around the Plaza itself, then you definitely are breathing smoke on those sidewalks. I also hope that public places includes all the events, like the Sonoma International Film Festival and BR Cone, both of which I volunteered at, and after committing to a shift, found out I'm placed right by where the VIPs have a smoking area, and I go home feeling sick and stinking of smoke. And then finally, for families and elderly folk who can't afford to move out of multi-unit housing, I really hope you'll provide the protection. Smoke is smoke is smoke, whether it's a cigarette, whether it's electronic cigarette, or whether it's marijuana. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Mayor Gallion, Councilmembers. Pam Granger, and tonight, I'm wearing my vice chair for the Coalition for Smoke-Free Sonoma County hat. We had just a couple of questions that Lori touched on. We're really hoping that public places means smoke-free patio dining, and we're really hoping that public places means smoke-free public events. You're not well-known for your parades necessarily, but if we're to have that. We know that farmer's markets in the park would be covered by smoke-free parks and recreation areas. So, if that's the case, then we heartily commend you for taking this giant leap forward for public health, lest I wave the American Lung Association's report card yet another time. I see you going from zero to hero. Actually, you already went a third of the way with a fabulous tobacco retail license that you did, you know, woo-hoo. But you would be covering smoke-free outdoor spaces and providing protections there, and smoke-free multi-unit housing. You might not have been the first at it, but when you got the three of these together, you and your two square miles, or two and a half square miles, are really making a giant statement. I might also echo Lori. In your findings, it points out that tot lots have a 25-foot protection area, and, as was mentioned, the county has gone with a 25-foot reasonable distance, and so, it would be well worth considering 25 feet, five extra feet make a big difference. So, we're part of the team that will help you inform and enforce. It's messy at the beginning, all these new laws. Anything you have is messy, and I want you to know it settled down quite nicely. I live over in Petaluma, and we've had our smoke-free outdoor spaces for two and a half years, and our multi-unit housing, just slightly less than that. And if you were to ask Joe Garcia, the public inspector, he doesn't get calls. You know, they just, it's a non-issue. So, we like non-issues, don't we? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to, oh, sorry. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close this back to council for discussion. Possible motion. Councilmember Huntley.
I think this is a really great motion. The one thing that I would like to perhaps reconsider, Councilmember Aggermonte brought up Section 72440 on page 78, Sections A and B, that have the exceptions at the end of each one, except while someone's actively passing through. And I don't see how, if someone was sitting there eating, or if someone's, you know, has a door open, somebody walking by, it's just going to have the same effect. So, I would support taking off the "except while the person is actively passing by" for both of those, so that you don't have the bypass exception, because I just, in practicality, it's just not really working. And then, as far as the distance goes, I guess county is 25 or 20. I could go either way. If we wanted to raise it 25, I would support that, or I would support it the way it is.
Okay, Councilmember Edwards?
This is Councilmember Huntley. You were talking about no smoking on sidewalks. That's what I'm hearing.
No, not all sidewalks, because that would include if you were, you know, walking past an empty parking lot, and there is nothing around you. But I think for practically speaking, especially on the Plaza, 25 feet from every place that's prohibited, that probably would be the entire sidewalk, but I'm not.
Sorry. Through the, Valerie, so this would mean the sidewalk on the Plaza, you can smoke all you want?
No, that's within a reasonable distance of where it's prohibited, which is the Plaza.
But how do we, I mean, from the enforcement side of that, that's where my concern is. So, then you just pop across the street in front of the windows at a real estate agency and smoke all you want?
No, if there was a door or a window to the real estate office, that's an enclosed area where smoking's prohibited. You have to be a reasonable distance from that, those openings.
So, if we went to the point where we just said no smoking on sidewalks, because I don't think there's anywhere that you can go on the Plaza that is not within 20 feet of.
I would say on the Plaza, that's correct. I don't know if that's true throughout the entire jurisdiction.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
What comes to mind is, like the Plaza of Pyrenees, the little walkway that's back there, there's no opening until you actually get to the back part of the bakery. So, that may exceed the 25-foot limit, you know, where someone would be walking, lighting a cigarette, but then realizing that they could just go ahead and stay there and smoke. So, I just, I just wanted to point that out for clarification. I'll wait for other council member questions. Okay, Councilmember Cook?
Yeah, I'll start out with comments. And yes, Elizabeth was talking about me. I was the council member who said that I don't think that we have a smoking problem on the Plaza, but you have to remember that night, I also said that I believe in common courtesy. And as I sit here on the council, and we talk about leaf blowers, we talk about everything, I think common courtesy might have just been thrown out of the window by a lot of people, because a lot of people tell me, you know, like one of the speakers talking about somebody going by, you know, their house, smoking. So, we're a council up here, trying to make a decision. And if you remember in the last meeting, and this is where I don't want to be misquoted, I don't like matrix voting, because what we are doing is, we are picking where you can smoke, where you can't smoke, and then you start talking about signage. Next thing is, you have no smoking signs everywhere. So, what my big deal last time was, let's make something that's enforceable. I want somebody to come to Sonoma, and if they're a smoker, they know where they can smoke and where they can't smoke, because the common courtesy of somebody asking somebody to put out a cigarette, I guess that doesn't exist anymore. I would like to think that a small town like ours, that if somebody came and said, "Please put out your cigarette," they would put out the cigarette just by common courtesy. I've thought a lot about it, so I'll tell you what I am for and what I am against. And it's hard, and this is why I don't like matrix voting, because the newspaper says Cook voted against banning, or Cook's for the smokers. When Cook's not for the smokers, Cook just thinks that maybe the law's going a little too far. I think that nobody should really smoke in the Plaza. I've always said that. If you look at the playgrounds, you look at the government entrance, and you start doing circles around there, you can really tell that you shouldn't be smoking in the Plaza. There's very few places in the Plaza that you could smoke anyway, so let's go ahead and say that you can't smoke in the Plaza. Multifamily unit housing, I've thought a lot about this. I mean, I've talked to some people who I feel are specialists in the field, and they've explained a lot of things to me. And I would say that, yes, there's been other jurisdictions that have banned in multifamily. I could support that. But when it comes to common areas, that's where, is there fire hazards? Who's, you know, who's making those decisions? I don't want to get too convoluted. And that's where, and that's kind of where I'm a little bit concerned. But with that said, if you are going to ban in a multifamily unit house, you would have to give them the right somehow to have a common area. But I can tell you, in the end, that's not going to work out good, because the common courtesy, it's going to be a fight. I always look at the veteran who fought for America, comes back, he's in a wheelchair, he's on the second floor, he wants to have a cigarette, and he lives in a multifamily unit house, because that's all he can afford, and he can't smoke, unless he goes down. But then I look at other people who live in those multifamily, and they have the right not to smell the smoke. So, these are things that weigh in your head when you're up here. That's why I don't think it's black and white. I think there's a lot of gray areas in this. I'm prepared tonight to vote for an easy ordinance, once the one gets repealed from the election, that makes it simple, enforceable, where everybody understands it. The council can come back, and we can add to it. I haven't heard one person send me, or I haven't had one email from a smoker telling me that what we're doing is wrong. All the emails have been from people who are tired of the smoke, because I guess the common courtesy has been thrown out the window. And to me, you know, to me, it's sad. So, I am prepared for an easy ordinance tonight, but remember, when I vote no tonight, I don't want to get called out too many times of being the person that is for the smoker, because I would love to ban smoking. the person that is for the smoker, because I would love to ban smoking in California, but I don't think it would work. I think you'd have protests in the street. And if we have something easy, people understand, and then, as it goes on, I've always believed that when you start banning things, give people time, because I hope that smoking in 20 years won't be an issue. I think so many people have died of cancer, and I think every smoker who smokes knows the risk. And I just, just don't support what is almost, to me, is a complete ban, except for what the state of California rules have. I am happy about the 21. I think that, I think that was a great forward. So I just want my colleagues to know that tonight, unless there's a motion, a motion that makes it just multi-family and all public parks in Sonoma, I would vote for that. But I want to be very careful when we start, you know, going down that slippery slope, because we're gonna have a lot of signs in Sonoma, and I'm gonna make sure that every one of them goes up.
I do believe, if I could just call attention to this, we talked about the underground parking garage. Where are we in that with this ordinance? Like, would there be public smoking there and sitting on the benches as you're modelling through the units themselves?
An unenclosed, a parking garage would probably be considered an enclosed area. It would only have one, so we're not talking about just a public parking area that's open?
No, it's enclosed, and it is underground.
If that was considered a public place, smoking would be prohibited.
Okay. Through the courtyard there, which has places that people can actually rest.
If that, if that parking garage was a place publicly or privately owned, which is open to the general public, regardless of any fee or age requirement, it would be an area where smoking is prohibited.
Thank you. All right. Madeline, Mayor Protem?
Thank you. My biggest concern, of course, is enforcement. Thank you, Councilmember Cook. However, for me, the overriding issue, I don't smoke, I've never smoked, never, I didn't even, don't even understand it. There are other things I have, you know, bad habits with, like Cheetos and hot dogs, but, you know. But I, but what, the disturbing thing is, the innocent nonsmokers are getting secondhand, are getting cancer, just because they're around smoke. And I don't even know how that happens. And so, you know, I, I am very comfortable with outdoor dining, and I think that could be around the plaza, as we've discussed that. And I, and I get, I would imagine if we're saying the plaza, that's streets and sidewalks, and the 20 and 20, 20 to 25-foot feet, I'm, you know, either way on that. It's interesting, I have to make a comparison. I worked for a state senator, and he actually introduced the helmet law here in California that now everybody really observes, and it's against the law to not have one. But there was, there were so many demonstrators, because what they're saying, they were saying is, you know, it's my right not to wear a helmet. It looks cool, I don't want to wear it. But the center, senator found that with studies, that people who don't wear helmets have serious, serious injuries. And then, they're the state, the state's problems, because many people can't afford that. I'm worried about secondhand smoke, especially for children, and because years and years of being around this, I really don't have the scientific facts, but I just feel really comfortable. So I do support streets and sidewalks, outdoor dining, and the amount of feet away, I have no idea. And that's in addition to what we have here that's suggested.
If I can suggest, Mayor Gallion, one way to approach this discussion with various points being brought up that might be changed, you might consider making a motion to adopt the ordinance, and then, if it's seconded, then there could be a discussion of amendments individually.
All right. So in other words, you're saying that because this is the first reading of the ordinance, we could make changes when it comes to further discussion?
Yes. Yeah. As Valerie's suggesting, to get this discussion rolling in more specific and definitive, she's encouraging the council to move, make a motion to adopt the ordinance as submitted. There'd be a second to that, but no roll call be taken on that motion. Then the mayor would entertain amendment motions. One amendment might be, I hereby move to change the 20-foot radius to 25. There'd be a second on that, and then there'd be action on that amendment. You take a roll call vote to see if that amendment enjoys a majority support. If so, then that amendment is considered an amendment to the main motion that has yet to be acted upon.
Correct.
And then you entertain the next amendment, and the next amendment. One might be the streets and the sidewalks surrounding the plaza, ban all smoking. That might be a second amendment you'd consider. And then there are others that you're all talking about here, that you'd want to put into an amending motion to modify that main motion. And once all the amendments have been acted upon, then you do a roll call on the main motion as amended.
Okay, that's, that's good. I do have one clarifying question, though. The outside public events, this would be something like I'm thinking, I know there's no smoking on state park lands, but we do Fourth of July celebration there, so there is no smoking, and I know that people are smoking. So that's not really up to us to enforce, correct?
Not on, it's, you're, you can enforce within the city limits.
Right. So that's an outside event that I know that I've experienced. Some of our, like our festival, the Biarcone Festival, that has recently moved over to the Field of Dreams, that is still public land, correct? Even though it is leased to a nonprofit. So what would that, how would that be administered?
The ordinance addresses city, property that's owned by the city. So if the city owns it, whether you lease it or have activities of a city nature, it would be covered under public places.
All right. And then, things like the city party, that's usually out in the streets, or it's in the backlot of City Hall, so that would be no smoking at that event as well?
You would have to include, not, you would, right now, streets have been accepted and are a permitted area to smoke, whether you're in a car or not.
So it would be an amendment to include streets?
Correct.
And sidewalks, is that correct?
And sidewalks, all sidewalks.
All sidewalks.
Or in... I don't think you need to include public events. I think that public events would occur on public property, or, so I'm not sure that that would be something that we would have to change.
Okay. I just wanna, I just wanna clarify that. All right. So we have, basically, we've been talking about possibly 25 feet has been one of the options. We've talked about outdoor dining as being one of the options. All streets, all sidewalks. Did I get them all, or is there more?
You also could limit the streets and sidewalk prohibition just to specific areas, such as the plaza. So that a street going through a subdivision, for example, 2,000 feet away from the plaza, you might think that smoking's okay on that street, or not.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Cook?
Because we had one public speaker talk about, I guess it was public land, so if it was, if you said all part, or all public lands, that would take care of that issue.
The existing ordinance covers public, public property, public places, and it also covers recreation areas, which include public and private recreation areas, where you might have a festival.
I think, though, that because the ordinance calls out streets and sidewalks and exempts them, that even though they are public, the streets actually are not owned by the city. They're owned by the state. And the sidewalks, depending on where they're located, if they're within the street right of way, they too are arguably owned by the state. I think it would be best to call them out specifically in the ordinance. If you want smoking prohibited on a street, you say that. If you want it prohibited on sidewalks, you say that.
Okay, so is anybody willing to start? All right, Councilmember Hundley.
I would like to make a motion. So I'm making a motion to approve it, but then we're gonna amend it. All right. A motion to approve an ordinance of the city of Sonoma adding Section 7.24 to the municipal code to regulate smoking and tobacco product use.
And what, you could just stop right there, and then get a second, and then each of you can begin offering your own amendments. It's, we're actually adding a chap, Chapter 7.24, that the, the agenda is a, description is off a little bit there.
So adding Section 7.24 to the municipal code?
Yeah, chapter.
It's chapter.
Yeah.
It should be chapter.
Yeah. So there's been a second, and now, at this point, there would then be...
Mr. Edwards.
Okay.
And now there'd be amendments.
Now, amendments. Councilmember Hundley?
First amendment, I want to remove the exception while person smoking is actively passing, from Section 72440, A and B.
Okay. Anyone else making another amendment?
I would recommend we, we take a second and a vote on that.
Okay, so, second, a further discussion? Let's vote on that? Is this roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Hundley?
So we're voting on each amendment?
Yes. Because some amendments may not pass.
Councilmember Cook?
No.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye. So that amendment passes for one. Second amendment, if any.
It's a, okay, two amendments. I'm looking at the 25 feet.
So your motion is to change it from 20 to 25 feet?
Yes.
Can we have a second? Roll call?
Councilmember Cook?
No.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye. So that is a four to one vote to add that amendment extending to 25 feet.
I'd also like to add, and I don't know if this is part of public places, outdoor dining, to make an amendment to include out, no smoking near outdoor dining.
Outside dining cafes.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have, we have our third amendment, and no further discussion. Let's go ahead and go for a roll call vote.
Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
No.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye. So that passes with a four to one. We're making this very complicated for you. Anyway, I'd like to go ahead and introduce the all streets and sidewalks. And this is not just on the plaza, but it is all within city limits. Well, are you gonna, I'm making the amendment.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, going forward, roll call?
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
No.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye. So that passes the Fourth Amendment with four to one vote. What else do we want to do? Are we finished?
Those are all the areas that you've mentioned so far, but I know that Councilman Edwards hasn't had a chance. We stopped at...
Oh, did I not?
No, no, you did, but we, in terms of comments from the councilmembers, we got almost all the way to the end, but we stopped before Councilman Edwards.
Missed down here on the left.
He's been a good seconder, though.
I think we've been pretty thorough here. I, you know, I look forward to dropping my kids off at school and not having to go through a wave of smoke.
All right. So now we have the initial motion. We have four amendments. Now we would go ahead and call for a roll call vote incorporating those four amendments.
Correct.
All right? Is there any further discussion? Okay, with that, I will do the roll call vote.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
No.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye. So with that, we have the passage of the 7.24 of the municipal chapter, all right, of the tobacco ordinance, and with its four amendments, as stated to staff.
Yes, and the council has introduced that ordinance as amended, and it will be brought back in its final form at a council meeting coming soon. Hopefully, next council meeting.
Right. And then, as far as, oh, there was one other thing. Okay. What about the language of this ordinance, the piece of paper that we received, about it becoming effective 30 days from and after the date of passage?
We're assuming your motion's included that revision.
Okay, so is there any...
As presented to you early.
As presented earlier?
Yeah.
Okay. So, yes, so I just wanted to make sure that was incorporated and not lost.
Very good.
All right.
And the effect of that is, although the ordinance becomes effective 30 days after its presumed adoption, it will not be enforced until the existing Chapter 7.24 is repealed by the voters in November. And at some point, the order calling for that election will come back to you.
Okay. Is everyone clear on what we just did? All right?
Two-minute break.
Yes, I think that's more than adequate. Okay, a five-minute break. Now to the last business item for the evening. It's discussion, consideration, and possible action to establish a decorum policy for public meetings requested by Mayor Gallion. And I believe City Manager, you're going to go ahead and start off the item.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gallion, members of the City Council. This was a continued item from your March 21 council meeting, which we held over during, due to the lateness of that meeting. Your council goals for 1516 includes, under policy and leadership, which states, provide continuing leadership as elected officials of the community and to promote the highest standard of ethics. And so in order to accomplish this primary goal, Mayor Gallion has suggested that council consider adopting a decorum policy for public meetings, which would apply to all council, commission, and committee meetings of the city. And this type of decorum policy is really envisioned to set uniform meeting and professional conduct standards, which are really commonly found in other governmental entities. I mean, most cities in other special districts also have a uniform set of guidelines that are, that are followed for all of their boards and commissions. And so once, if the council chooses to adopt such a policy, we would utilize it for training purposes for all of our new and existing elected and appointed officials in concert with the Brown Act training and other trainings that we perform through the city attorney's office. So tonight, really, this is a discussion of whether the council chooses to put this type of policy into effect, if they wish the city attorney and myself to work on drafts of policies that we can bring back for your consideration. The city attorney does have a background in this with other cities that he does, he works with, and I have the availability through the city managers group of other policies from other cities that we can, that we can bring for your consideration. So in other words, we wouldn't be reinventing the wheel. There are other sample policies out there that we could utilize. But this would be something that can be utilized. We bring, we bring new commissioners, new committee members on, and we don't really have a standard training practice policy, and even for, you know, for the public when they address the council or any of our commissions, a standard practice of really how they do address our elected officials or our commissioners. So it can encompass all of those factors in it. And so this, again, is for your decision as to, is this something that you would like to have the city attorney and I work on to, to bring some sample policies or a draft of a policy back to you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Carol. Anyone else wish to ask questions or give some comment? Councilmember Hundley?
So today, we're deciding if this is something we're interested in, and then you're going to present us with different options?
That's correct, so if, if this is something that you wish us to, as staff, work on and bring back to you, and if so, if there's anything in particular, an issue in particular you would also like us to include.
Okay.
Seeing no other questions or comments, I'll go ahead and open it up to the public for any comment. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward.
Chris Petlock, 426 Nap Road. Believe it or not, this was the bottle of wine I came to drink from. So I have had the great pleasure of serving as a commissioner for the city for six years, and for five and a half of those years, they keep electing me as chair of that commission. And you send a lot of great people, but we spend a lot of time kind of bringing them on board, whether it's the absentee policies, or, you know, how to wait their turn to speak, or, you know, any, any number of items that can really be disruptive. And I can especially say, this year, we've had a few people, one in particular who I know has a lot of experience, has been particularly hard to kind of bring into the meetings process, and I'm sure other commissions and meetings struggle with the same thing. And I think the more that we, as a city, can do to kind of help people get, get into the meeting process, understand what the process is, the more effective we can be. I think it's really a wonderful thing when people do step forward, and I think just, you know, affording them as much training as possible so they can just be integrated into the process, understand, you know, what it takes to get things done sometimes, you know, instilling them a little bit of patience. They're not going to get the first night everything they wanted to do when they came, came aboard. And then also, I'd like to say that I think it's really important that, that the commissions are afforded the resources needed to get their work done, whether it's providing them with staff of appropriate level so that questions can be answered in a timely manner. And I think, you know, I think, you know, just providing them with the tools that they need to do the things that you've asked them to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. And we have someone else wishing to speak?
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Gallion and City Council, Elizabeth Emerson here. This is very close to my heart. I have spent the last 26 years of my life practically living in city council meetings all over California and seeing the stress of public life. And it really hit home when my boss at the Marin County Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Charles McLaughlin, died of a stress-related heart disease. He was in his 40s, and his memorial service was attended even by people from Congress. Everybody at the memorial service talked about the stress of public life, and because of that, I started a national research project and started to do consulting and helping elected leaders deal with stress. And it's really important for everybody that works in a leadership position to have resilient support and help. I think that the public, you know, national studies conducted by Pew have shown that the public is so exhausted from the lack of civility in public life, you know, and how, you know, even the, the way the public treat elected leaders, the way some of the people running for office treat each other is of great concern to many people. So every time we can lift up higher standards, higher ethics, compassionate communication, nonviolent communication, I've worked with two boards of supervisors where they had death threats on their lives. And this has got to be really hard, and that starts with, you know, it starts with nonviolent compassionate communication and respect and, you know, everybody being constructive. Today, I was doing a training with my colleague Pam Granger in San Mateo County on how to pass public policies, and the San Mateo County Health Department said, the city of San Mateo in our county has the most pleasant, constructive, professional environment of all the cities in San Mateo County. Well, I looked on their website, and they do have a public meeting decorum policy. They've gone through this process that you're proposing, and I think that if every city in the United States did this, more visionaries, more sensitive people, more young people would be attracted to participate in public life, there'd be an increase in civil engagement, and it would really elevate the whole culture. So I hope that you get this on the agenda. I'm so excited. I want to help out in any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth.
Lori Bremer, I live in Sonoma Valley. I support this as a concept, not only for this council, but as a model for others. I've seen at Sonoma County supervisors' meetings, city of Santa Rosa city council meetings, really ugly behavior towards the council members and towards the supervisors, very aggressive, to where I've felt, is something violent going to happen here? And, you know, it's just concerning that if, you know, there's, there's no bailiff here, there's no one that could actually, you know, enforce security if someone were threatening to you. And that's nervous-making to me, because people do get so involved in, in these discussions sometimes. Also in Santa Rosa, they know where the cameras are for what they broadcast, and people sit behind the podium with signs like this the whole time for what they're voting, that they, what they're in favor of. And that's just really distracting, and I think stress-causing for this council members who have to sit there and see that in their peripheral vision all the time. So I just support you in any way that makes these chambers a comfortable place for you to be. You spend long hours here, and it should be a place that is not stressful to you beyond just the decisions that you're making that I know you take so seriously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jack Wagner, Vanu Lane. Some anecdotal additions to what the other members of the audience talked about. I've been going out to the, the board of supervisors' meetings in Santa Rosa, maybe like every other month now, just do some updates on public banking. First time I went out, there was about 30 minutes of organized, like hate lobbying against the board of supervisors, and we got a little bit of that when we had the fluoride on the agenda. We had a couple of people that come out here and seemed like they were just spewing some pre-written script that had really nothing to do with what we were talking about. When this was on the agenda last time, I looked at, looked up some other cities. I can't remember the city I found, but they had some, some language about, I think it was like overt political statements, or if something came up, that's just, this was a political rant, has nothing to do with the issue. But this group out in Santa Rosa, out in, at the board of supervisors' meetings, were basically threatening their lives, saying like, you are guilty of treason for this or that, and, you know, we can have you tried to death, and it's, it's horrible. And I went up and, you know, after a half hour of listening to this, and just said how like, I felt disrespected as a member of the audience, as someone coming there to talk about something, so. And at the same time, there is, you know, there's danger in silencing dissent. And so I think there's that balance that you need to understand. There's a huge difference between three or four people that come here during public comment to speak about homelessness versus people who are paid by someone or who are just on some other agenda. People being malicious versus someone just being angry. It's hard. It's, you know, we fight to have this kind of semi-chaotic, free-life government thing going, going on, and, you know, but it's important, I think, to, to be civil, and it's important for you guys to not be subjected to just anger and hate. So yeah, there's a lot of examples out there, a lot of cities have done this, so thank you guys for your, your work, too.
Thank you.
Just like having our own little party here. And so, and the flip side, I have to tell you.
You have to state your name.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Pamela Granger. I have to, I commend you. I always feel very welcome in this council. Part of that, I know, is the proximity, you know, so this is a very intimate setting. And so I haven't had the pleasure of being at any of the other commissions, but I have been in other places. And it's, it's a two-way street, so we for sure want to have you as individuals and as elected officials respected and feel safe. And the, the attitude of the people who are serving towards the public that are coming to speak, you know, so, yeah, I mean, you know, it makes perfect sense for people to take notes and whatnot, I get a little bit of eye contact, I feel, I feel good. And it's very disturbing, however, if you're at a place where nobody looks like they're paying any attention when you're talking, or like they're bothered. Elizabeth didn't tell the story, but she had something to say one time when one of the council members broke a pencil. He didn't like what, what she was saying, and it just, you know, of course, it could have been the end of the evening, it was like one last straw, but we know how sweet she is, so, you know, that's not okay. So that's the nice thing, if you're doing it, the training is, the first gentleman said, who's the forever chair, how great to remind your commissioners and boards about the, the way to make people on our side feel, feel welcome and appreciated. You don't have to agree with them, but a, a, a thank you, you know, thank you for coming today goes a long way. So I think it's a fabulous idea. I, I'm just tickled pink that there's that many examples to work from, so, you know, this is a wahoo kind of night. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Pam. All right, seeing no one else coming to the podium, I'll go ahead and close this and bring it back to council for action discussion. Mayor Protem?
Well, it's interesting, one of the most important things, I think, within this issue, the decorum are two things. One is that I think the, the goal for a city council is to listen to people, share their thoughts with you, and that you are attentive and feel honest with your, with your thoughts when they get up to the podium. I think that's important. People need that feedback. They need to know that we feel that they're important, and what they have to say is important. And also, the other side of that, you know, having worked for legislators, oh, golly. But I will tell you, I, out in that lobby, I was called an idiot and by, you know, somebody. And it was kind of interesting to me, because I come from a boxing family. And I had to give up my mouthpiece. give up my mouthpiece at age 12, and I haven't been called an idiot since possibly I was six or seven years old. So it's a reflection, really, on that person, of course. It's just very important, I think, that we have respect for the citizens. I've always seen citizens, whomever I've represented, as my boss, and that's the way I like to live my life. Thank you. And with that, maybe, if there's no comments or questions-
Do what you wish.
I would like to, let me see, possible action. Introduce the action to establish a decorum policy for public meetings. And I also understand that the city attorney and city manager will be working on this to present to the city council at another time. Am I correct?
So that's in the form of a motion?
In the form of a motion.
To direct staff to prepare?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, well, we need a second, if anyone's going to second. Well, we can have discussion after we second.
Because then, yeah.
All right, let's go ahead and have you say something.
You know what, actually, I'll pull my motion, so we can do that.
All right. Further discussion?
Because it's not, you can't do that.
Just in my listening with the Board of Supervisors, et cetera, my first experience was when I was probably 17 years old, trying to save the Sonoma County, or the Santa Rosa Air Center, and it was Ig Vella, Helen Putnam, and that generation. And they were all awesome. I mean, they were, it was a different kind of Board of Supervisors at that time. And, you know, but the issue of having people with signs and everything else, I have no problem with that. I would never want to trounce on our First Amendment rights, ever. I mean, people can say what they need to say, and as long as we're not moving in that direction, I'm all for supporting, but, a decorum policy.
So now, are you still discussing? Okay. All right, I'm just looking left and right here, okay?
Yeah, no, I didn't want to second until I said it. Yeah, I'm going to support this to move it forward. I think the direction that I would look at is as far as the council and our commissioners. I've been to some of the commission meetings, and I've always felt that they should come to a city council meeting and see how we treat each other, and possibly getting something. But what I wanted to be a little careful of is, I remember when I was in the nosebleed seats, I won't mention the two council members, but they were discussing this, and it was something about eating up on the dais, and I'm sure that'll be something that is probably throws into it. And it was a weird conversation, because I remember it never passed, because one council member would bring, I mean, he'd bring his whole dinner and have it there, and the other council member had a problem with that. I like the fact that we all bring mints. I like that I bring my Snapple, or, I know some people are afraid because it's televised, maybe it's advertising. I've never felt that I'm advertising for any product up here, but I'll be supporting it, but I just kind of wanted to, I think it's more of how we would treat each other up here, not really going into the public. I think that we already have that, because I know when I was mayor, if somebody was, if somebody said something, you'd kick them out. I mean, and that's, you know, and that's part of, you know, our safety up here, and we have other safety things. So I will be supporting this. So if, do you have any comments, or should I second?
Well, we have to put it back on again, because it's been withdrawn.
Is that done?
No, Rachel needs to comment.
I support this. I'm, I look forward to seeing what the choices are, and I think anything that helps us have a respectful, yet constructive discourse up here is something I completely support. And I also think that the commissions, they're, you know, kind of thrown into it, and I think that it would make everybody more comfortable if they could have some guidance, so I will support this.
Now?
So I will make a motion to establish a decorum policy for public meetings and instruct our city manager and city attorney to put some information for us regarding this issue and bring it back to us.
And Mayor, I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. I will just go ahead and weigh in on this. I have observed in my eight-years-many council meetings, many commission meetings, I come from it from the standpoint that I, as a commissioner and as a council member, always wanted to be prepared for whatever was going to come forward in that particular evening. And sometimes, you saw how things evolved and somehow deconstructed in some instances. And to me, I always feel that wherever you meet, that it should be a safe space for you to go ahead and say what you need to, when you're commenting from the public on public comment. And I have been a little bit concerned over some people who have come up to me, who have said that they don't feel safe in the council chambers. And my thing is to go ahead and create a safe space, also, with a commonality that happens between commissions and council in our interaction with the public. And I guess this is elevated to such a level that when I went to the League of California Cities Dinner, that there was a special presentation on what the Institute for Local Government has done in this particular arena. And so we do have some partners that already have things in print for this that I think would be very helpful. And it was about the fact that there is a concern about conducting public meetings. So this is why I have suggested this, and I'm happy to have the support of council here on this. And with that, we will go ahead and call for a roll call vote.
Councilmember-
Hundley.
Aye.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte.
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
And Mayor Gallion.
Aye, so it passes 5-0 with direction to staff to come back with a decorum policy. All right. And will this night end soon? So, we are now to council member, well, regular calendar, city council is successor agency, there are no items, will move to council member reports and comments. Anyone giving reports or making comments?
I have.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. I really enjoyed Coffee with a Cop, and that was really great. I understand that prior to that, they were at the Barking Dog, and they have plans to go to other, you know, to other venues, so I'm really excited about that. I also attended North Bay Watershed Association, they just, where they discuss the San Francisco Estuary, and that in itself is just a wonderful story. I attended the Farmer's Market opening, which I thought was unbelievable, and the mayor's and council meeting, council members' meeting at Ramikins. We hosted that event, and by coincidence, the issue that they discussed was housing. Thank you.
My goodness. Councilmember Cook?
And I'll make it really short. We had a library advisory committee meeting last Thursday, and I just want to remind everybody that at the Farmer's Market, they do have a table, the library, so check it out. I also attended Sonoma Clean Power Board of Directors meeting the Thursday prior to that one, and there was a nice press Democrat article, if anybody wants to go online and read it, about Sonoma Clean Power, and I'll leave it at that.
Anyone else wishing to comment or report? Okay. Mr. Edwards? No? Okay. I just wanted to remind everyone that our Memorial Day is coming up, and we have a fabulous celebration that is moving forward. We have a goal-setting session on May 23rd, which we are inviting comments from the public at this time, but I'll go ahead and let the city manager talk about that further. I also wanted to say that I'll be attending the Celebration for Women Award Luncheon next week as well, which is celebrating our other entity over here, which is the hospital district. I'd like to just say that there's been a lot of good things happening in Sonoma lately, and I'd like that synergy to continue. I feel that the community is coming together once again to celebrate things in a more community aspect. We'll be hearing more about the Fourth of July Parade and also the city party. So I think we're getting back in the swing of things, and it looks pretty good from here. Okay, from that, city manager comments and announcements, including announcements from successor agency staff.
Just a couple of quick announcements. As Mayor Gallion said, we will be having our council goal-setting session on May 23rd at 1:00 in the EOC. We have been soliciting public input through our new City Pulse collaboration software. We've actually received 108 comments through there, so that will be presented at the council goal-setting session. I've also received some direct feedback through email, so that will also be under public comments for goal-setting. Our council budget work study session is on June 9th, also at the EOC. The city solicited grant applications for our community fund grant. We've received 23 grant applications, and our review committee is now reviewing all those applications, and that will come back with a recommendation for funding at the June 6th council meeting. And our public works director reports that in April, the city received, or achieved, excuse me, a 31% water conservation level when compared to April of 2013, so we're still doing really well in water conservation. And lastly, our earth work will begin in early June for Habitat Restoration Project at 125 East MacArthur, the city's open space parcel there. The project is being managed by the Sonoma Ecology Center partnership with the city, and the project is expected to continue construction through July of 2016. So you'll see earth moving there on that parcel. We do have an opening also that we're advertising for, for a CSCC alternate member, and then we're also advertising for a representative on the Sonoma County Library Commission to represent the city valley area here on that commission. So that concludes my remarks, and it's nice to be back.
All right. Nice to have you back, Carol.
Thank you.
Comments from the public?
We've worn them out.
Okay. Seeing that no one has come back, we'll bring it back to the council. We are now requesting public comments regarding closed session. Oh, yes, did you think we were gone? No, we're not gone yet. All right, anyone wishing to go ahead and make public comment on closed session? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and bring it back to council, and we will go to closed session at this time, and then we will reconvene in open session and report out in closed session after we finish. All right, so, council, let's move it.